...at 5:36 PM. This is the ACSU Board of SLS meeting, January 5th. Let us do a round of introductions, please.
Yes, fine.
Sherry, why don't you start?
You ready to go ahead with the policy?
No, no, no.
I'm not a member of this board. I am observing, chairing, U D three, Rick.
Okay.
Um, Lorraine Morris, U D three, Middlebury. Carol Ford, Ripken.
Brian Alton, Ripken. Perry Hansen, Ripken. Jason Duquette, Offler, Middlebury.
Ricardo, Middlebury.
Anna Rose, for amendment. Rich Stad, ACSU, Ripport. Eric Haddish, Waiverich.
Reverend Steve Shaw.
Rick Sartor, Paulson. Mark Harris, Middlebury, U D three.
Christine Waiverich.
Amy Graham, Middlebury, U D four. Sarah, Department of Farm Law. Christine, U D six.
Oh, wait.
Sherry. Speaker of the Board. Adam, for report. Both your staff and all, please.
Susan Sheets, interim tech director.
Vicki Wells, director of student services.
Renateck Nellis, principal at Salisbury.
Susan English, associate director of student services.
Jen Kravitz, principal in Farm Law.
J P Reese, U D three, Middlebury.
Patrick Reed, middle school principal. Tom Buzel, Mary Hogan, school principal.
Mike Lennox, Shore, principal.
Rachel, Rachel, principal. Jennifer, principal, Ripport.
Scott Siegel, school assistant principal.
Catherine Dean, high school.
Bill Glass, high school, counselor.
Get close to U D three, Shore.
Laura Lass, U D three, Salisbury.
Kate Hamlin, Farm Law.
Steve Wurz, U D three, Middlebury.
Allison Warren, U D three, right, Mary Hogan.
Jeff Lester, school counselor, Mary Hogan.
John Lucier, Salisbury.
Very good. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Are there any comments from the public chair or the board seat? There are none, we'll move on. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from November 1st, please?
So.
Any discussion, any changes, any observations you'd like? There are none, all in favor of approving the minutes as intended, can you say aye? Aye. And opposed? Abstentions? There you go. We are, we're part of superintendent schools.
Thank you. So tonight is for many of our boards, most likely the final time they're going to be looking at their budgets. It may not be. And we still do have time, should be needed. We have revised all of the budgets from our last meeting in December. Have gone through, as many of you know, our processes here included a new software program, which we are feeling is actually, while it's been a little challenging to get moving, with it giving us better and stronger data and more accurate data. So in your board meetings, when you recess from the general session, there'll be a stack of budgets in your room. And we'll put a memo from David Duchesne, the business manager, that will include an updated estimated finance page and your budget for FY '17. We have been working under the cost containment measure throughout the fall, and at the same time, we've been watching the state and legislators talk on both sides of the cost containment measure. It looks like there's going to be action soon on that measure. However, all of our budgets are currently under that cap. So I think in terms of where we stand right now, we stand on firm ground in terms of whatever happens with that cost containment measure. And I will keep you abreast of what's happening. Last week, the director of the superpeds association contacted all superpeds and asked about what the effect was of the cost containment measure on budgets in our schools. So I have been communicating with Mark Ilia and others about kind of where we are, where we stand. I think we've done a really, I think we've done a great work to both rein in costs and also to continue to provide the kinds of services that we have been for a long time. There was a sense, I think, especially amongst staff of the unknown with the cost containment measures. And in my recent communicate, it felt good to be able to tell them that we've come through this together, I think, in a really good place. I have been communicating with some of you about budgets and budget issues. If there are any outstanding questions after tonight, please contact me right away and we can talk through those. We can also set up other meetings. So if your board is feeling like we're close but not quite there, then let's set up another meeting and really do due diligence to the questions that we might have about the budget.
Okay. First item number six is a review to amend existing policy. J P C B. Jerry, do you want to speak to that, or do you want a member of your committee to speak to that?
I'd be happy to. Thank you to Carol Ford for pointing out this error. An error in the USBA model was the incorrect date for deadline for Ford setting tuition for non-resident students. It had to start February 1st, it should be January 15th. We confirmed this with the SBA. So it's simply a matter of changing that date.
Very good.
There is an error on the A O E website, which lends credence to the complication around this issue. We talked, Carol and I talked about this last year, and I had seen February 1st, and then it's January 15th in another place on their website. So hopefully after your call to the SBA, we'll solve that.
I think so.
Yep. Questions or discussion on this policy? It'll be on the agenda to act on next time. There are none, we'll move on to item seven, which is adoption of a policy J F J C, which is replacing two policies, J F J and J F J B. Jerry?
It actually replaces three policies, those two plus on ce on t a z. These will review the nine S K C F U meeting.
Sherry, I had a question on this with respect to the appendix, which indicates designated employees. This that we're looking at tonight is an ACSU policy, so it makes sense. Dr. Rose and Dr. Wells listed here, and so is designated employees. Is it the intention that as this goes out to individual districts, the appendix will be modified and you will act on the policy on an annual basis, or is that left open?
Yes, the appendix meaning people to whom reports should be made?
Yes.
Yes, I assume that that would have to be updated whenever changes are made. Not necessarily on an annual basis, I would think, but whenever changes were made to the designated people.
So within the policy, it indicates that that position thing, well, I don't understand correctly, I thought it was, I thought it indicated the procedure. So it'd be a policy change when has personnel changed in that position?
Yes, I could hear a hundred percent of what you said, Rick, but again, I would think the designated reporting people would have to be changed in the policy whenever those people are changed. But if from year to year, they remain the same, I would think no change would be made. Does that answer your question?
Yes. Other questions for Jerry on this before we act? And a motion to adopt this policy? Please, so. Say it. Jason. More discussion on this policy before we go to vote. All in favor of adopting this policy and replacing three existing policies, can you say aye? Aye. And opposed? Abstentions? All, this motion passes. Item eight, amendment two, G D D C D, employee harassment. Anything we need to know, Jerry?
Uh, this is just an update and required language from the SBA.
Okay. Second. Just a second, one second. Discussion. No discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye. And opposed? Abstentions? Very good, motion passes. Any other business to be brought before this floor? All right, very good. I'll be more ready, it'll take a couple minutes and wait until six. How's our agenda from the rest of the board? She gone, or it says gone. She went. All right. Let's kick into the general session. Just want to focus entirely on group chat. So everyone received a mailing earlier this week, I just, well, everyone on the board received a mailing to take advantage of those. We didn't all redo this first section, give you an overview of what we're going to try to accomplish in the next hour. So in 56 days, our constituents will be asked to vote on the most significant shift in school governance that's been proposed to the board for decades. As board members, stewards of public education, we bear a collective responsibility to make the facts of this proposal known to everyone. To vote the next hour in preparation for that work, objectives will be involved a common set of talking points that every board member can be comfortable with and use to discuss or present the proposal to their community members. Share, we want to share with you what's in place already and determine what other tools are needed to get the word out, prepare for this vote. Needless to say, it's a complicated issue and a complicated set of ballots. Effectively, we need to do all we can to ensure voters are making informed decisions. So tonight, we're going to start off with a presentation from Ruth and Suzanne regarding the charter committee work and the articles and ballot process, warnings where we're at with that. Then we're going to break up into individual district boards. The suggestion has been made, and outspoken, self-doubtful conversation, Alan, with U D three representatives would participate with the respective town, district town to be engaged in that conversation. So when we break out, there's four questions on here to pose the conversation, and I'm going to add a fifth. Four questions, or five questions on who's paying attention at this point from your communities? Different perspectives emerging from different stakeholders? Do the draft talking points address the issues appropriately? And what outreach efforts are the most effective near the community? And what process or technical questions remain unanswered? So the first four questions are community-wide questions, I think, process, technical question is what board members need. It isn't out there already. We want to find, and also think about who the key influences in recount and our awareness again on this issue, and for the discussion. So the whole committee spent 15 minutes or so on that, and we come back as a group and share those thoughts. I'd like to spend some time working on the talking points and kind of refining that as we go along, so we've got a working document that we can clean up and distribute in very short orders, which means hands sooner than later. Then we'll go over kind of communication timeline, what's going to happen over the next 56 days, what needs to happen, what is missing that needs to be added to it, and eventually, the action will be to kind of bring this plan to closure and distribute information to everyone to participate. It's going to take almost to get the word out there. There's a lot of misinformation, there's a lot of lack of information, there's a lack of interest in some instances at this point, so it's time to start demanding the government to make sure people are aware as they're making an informed decision. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Ruth and Suzanne to pull this over to the article
So as Jessica Brooks and I will do the presentation on education and the principles, many of you have heard from last vote, and Reed has been represented, trying to advocate education and social. Our eastern charter committee, we have five members, Middlebury, Jason Duquette, Offler, and Jeff, regarding our co-chair, Devin Flotlin. Devin Flotlin, Kerry, Lorraine Morris, I don't see her.
I care.
Barbara Saunders, and I have the first student, Ms. Riker. Myself, Maureen Deppen, I thought it was. Um, Chris King, Joe Kier.
Suzanne, you can leave, please.
Perry Hansen, the president, Suzanne, and Tim Ryan. Um, this is our total board of directors. We've been through several iterations of four three sessions. We are currently approved, or first number of board directors, which is generally proportioned. Um, this is based on decennial US census, US census. And then the biggest change is that each board of board director members would be selected, not just by their own town. The votes would be mingled, and each director would be voted on by all the towns. So that is a big change, but it's also a change towards making the board more of a unified group between all students and the entire, very similar to the ACSU board, the board membership is seven members from Middlebury and then one each from the six surrounding The initial board will have initial terms, if you want to say so. Ripport, you'd see the person who's from Ripport would initially run for a one-year term. Farm Law's person would run for a two-year term. Middlebury has two one-year terms, two-year terms, and three two-year terms. And those that may be interested in running for Middlebury would actually have to specify on their petition what length of service they'd like to run for. It's not going to be just put your name in and click the back. So those are the way that that's set up. So the nomination process, which is slightly different than if you were running for your own local board, you have to complete petitions with a letter of various signatures of 1% of the registered voter in your town. Middlebury candidate must choose a specific term, if you can. Petitions are usually of the year term, or 102, 1.5, so Middlebury people sit there and talk about where they're located. And then some of us, our terms on our current local board, our terms expire this year, and we may wish to run the new board. We can run the both boards at the same time, but it would be separate petition. So that would be another conversation, and we're going around the petition, such as why not that too. So that might also start a conversation with people above or below. The way we, she's like, I'm writing a group, it was created with financial, she's wizard, and all of the data on the site, so she studied for a long time, so she had this part, and mine, we worked on the representation. So I'll take the microphone that I wear, and the microphones, for those of you who know me well. So the new district would assume all of the property of our current districts starting on July 1st, 2017. So all of the school buildings, all of the contents and the property that they rest on would go, would be transferred to the new district as of July 1st, 2017. As would all of the fund balances, whether they're in deficit or in surplus, the fund balances would transfer to the new district, and all of the capital debt for our districts would transfer to the new district. If a school were to be closed, the property would transfer back to the town in which the school is located. The, except for U D three, for U D three, that would, that property, if for some reason we closed a school that's owned by U D three, the new board could then sell that property because it actually is in Middlebury, but it doesn't belong to the town of Middlebury. And then all special funds, like scholarship funds or special purpose funds, remain with the current purposes that they have now. So this is the estimated debt level for all of our districts as of July 1st, 2017. You can see the district with the most debt is U D three, which is owned by all of us already. So it's not a huge issue as it is in some towns and some mergers. And then this is the preliminary tax savings by town. This estimated preliminary cumulative over the five, first five years. I do want to caution you that this has already changed with the creation of our budgets this year. It actually looks different than this, and I have not had a chance to recalculate it because we're still in the middle of budget development or for the end of budget development. But this has already changed because of where we're at and the numbers that the state has given us to do our budgets have been different than what the assumptions were that we made last summer. But this is what we've gone with, and they would be of a similar range, but it would be different. So there are a number of financial efficiencies that were identified that are sort of low hanging fruit. Obviously, business, finance, oversight costs would be able to be reduced because we would have one budget versus nine budgets or eight budgets. Board management with smaller one board, potentially enhanced staffing and facility opportunities for sharing. And then we identified approximately $175,000 in the first five years of the meeting, but there are certainly long-term potential efficiencies with a new, more streamlined Obviously, there are a lot of towns and board members and people who are concerned about the potential for school closure. This is an issue that we talked about at length with our charter committee. We settled on the necessity of an affirmative vote of 10 members of the new board. That's more than two-thirds of the new board would be required to vote in favor of closing the school. And there would be requirement for public hearings, at least one of which needs to be held in the town in which the school is located. And there would be required public notice of the intent to vote on whether or not to close the school, stating the reason for the closure at least 10 days prior to the vote. So that's a double warning, usually school board meetings require a five-day warning, this is a 10-day warning. It's similar to the warning requirements for when we're changing school policies. So it's a longer length of time to let people know that this is something that a new board, a new board would be voting on. So one of the big issues that is of concern to our towns and to our town clerks and to our voters is what articles will actually be voting on in town meeting and the method for voting, which is very complicated. And Peter and I spent a lot of time talking to multiple lawyers over our Christmas holidays. And so our lawyer is drafting the ballot that will be used in all of our towns, so the language will be identical for all of our towns, and that all of the voters will be voting on the same thing, aside from obviously the name of the town. And Article one will include the grades that will be included in the new district, grades pre-K through 12. The structure of the school board, which is what Suzanne went over, the 13-member board with seven from Middlebury and one each from the smaller towns. The assumption of debt and school property, which I just went over. And then the fact that the final report of the charter committee, including all of the articles that the charter committee agreed on that were approved by the agency of education and approved by the state board of education, those are on file at all of the clerk's office, and any voter can ask for a copy of that report and view that report before they vote. It's also on the school website, they can also get it from any, from the central office. So that report is public and is available to voters. Article two would be the election of the school district directors as outlined above. And we will all be voting on them, and they will all be in the same order on all of our ballots. So you wouldn't go into some town and have them all shuffled up. They'll all be in the same order, alphabetical most likely, by town and then by candidate, so that we would, and then we're also working to make sure that the voting hours in each of our towns are the same, so that we ensure that everybody has equal access to the same information, the same access to voting, the same ballot language, so that there's not an advantage or a disadvantage in one town versus the other. So that's where we're at. And I do want to take questions, if you have any, about any of the technical issues or the procedures, or the finances, or the structure of things, because we want to make sure you understand it before we go to start talking about it to voters and to each other. So if you have any question, even if it is little or seems silly, believe me, I've heard them all at this point, so please ask. I'm kind of, this keeps me up at night, so I know a lot about it. Thank you for asking.
I was just curious, on the procedure of voting, you said that say you want to run for Waiverich floor, and all town would be repoting? I was wondering what the thought was behind that, and all the town would vote? Is that what I'm getting at?
Yeah, so we'll all be, so for the Waiverich candidates, you know, maybe there'll be two or three of you running in Waiverich, and all of our towns would vote on those candidates from Waiverich and choose one of them. So the highest vote getter in the seven towns for the Waiverich seat would win that seat. And one of the, the rationale behind this is that constitutionally, our board needs to be proportional based on the decennial census population of each of our towns. And it's challenging to do that because of the variety of sizes of our town. We have Middlebury at one end with 8,500, we have Ripken at the other end with 588 people, based on the 2010 census. So there's a huge variation. We also have to meet the statutory requirements for Vermont law of the size of the board and the number of people from each town. We have to have one from each town, and we can't have more than 18 people on the board. So we had a lot of variation, a lot of variables that we had to take into consideration and requirements to meet. So the board that we came up with is the best we could do to meet all of these requirements. It still is not perfectly proportional because of the variation in population. So by allowing at-large voting, case law, some cases that are coming for Vermont courts, allow for a level of disproportionality if the voters vote on that board at large. If all the voters in the district vote on that board, then there's precedent for allowing another disproportionality that would not otherwise be called out. So essentially, that's where we ended up. We needed to come up with something that met the constitutional test, met the legal test, and was what our lawyer recommended. We followed closely our legal counsel advice on this issue because it's really tricky, and because we don't find it convenient in school district and immediately have it in court. So this is essentially the thingy that we came up with.
I could see somehow, there's a meaning to explain to the future why every town point, or it's made the Waiverich candidates or candidate, you know, for a lot, it would be kind of nice if the public could have, you know, sort of, you could argue, explain why that procedure is.
Right, and I think that as from you going out to your communities, trying to come up with the wording of what I just sort of attempted to explain would be helpful, and I'm happy to help any of you have this question, come up with language that works for you that you can explain. I think another benefit of it is that then the board members are accountable to all of our towns, so the Waiverich member is voted on by all of us, so the Waiverich member is then therefore accountable to everybody in all the towns. You know, Ripport and Shore would just have as much say in your election. You know, Ridport and Shoreham would just have as much say in your election as Waveridge would. So, and the same goes for all the towns. So there's this sort of level of this, we're all in this together, we're all in the same school district. These are all of our towns, all of our schools, all of our kids. So I think there's that added to it as well.
I have a question about that. Why, what is the thinking behind how we touched it correctly? You were saying that they require numbers, say, 30 or 1% of your own town. Why wasn't this of any town considering your voting is based on any town?
Correct, yes. So this was something also that we, that this is what we had a long discussion with our lawyers about over Christmas break. So the current requirement is the 30 signatures or 1% of the number of voters in your town. So for Rippton, I believe it's five people and Rippton needs to sign the signatures. In Middlebury, it's 30. So there's a big variation there. There was a possibility that it was going to be 60 signatures and you could get those signatures from any town. And to a certain extent, that is logical, I would think, based on the sort of whole thing. But there was a feeling that that may be a little too extreme in this first election. I can tell you that Vermont law is a little murky in this area. So our lawyers got together with the AOE lawyer, the BSBA lawyer, and they all talked about what makes the most sense in order to make this work out. And I think their conclusion was, well, right now, people who run for school board in these towns are used to this, you know, 1% or 30, and for this time around, we'll go with this and everybody will be on the same page. And potentially, over the next few years, as more and more districts move in this direction, I think that Vermont law will hopefully be clarified in this area. So it may change. It may become 60 signatures and, you know, every town, it may, they may change the requirements of the board to give us a little bit more flexibility. So that was the thinking, is that for now, this makes the most sense. It's something that everybody could wrap their head around. And it wouldn't, you know, force Perry to go out and get 60 signatures. Or Brian, or Jerry, or whomever. Does that make sense? Our sort of?
Somewhat, yes.
Yeah.
So is the resident seat required, each director? If I get elected in Shoreham, would that be a good one?
So here, you have to be a resident of the town in which you are, for which you're serving. So if you were elected in Shoreham and then you moved to Ridport, you would have to resign your Shoreham seat, then you could run in Ridport the next time around. It'd still be the same board and everything, but for now, that's the way it works. Eventually, potentially, it will go to a fully at-large board where there's not, where everybody is sort of shuffled together and it doesn't matter what town you're from. But right now, there's an requirement in state law that each town has to have at least one representative. There has to be a Shoreham seat, a Ridport seat, et cetera. So, so yeah, if you're planning on this, maybe you might want to wait.
But I didn't follow. Let's see if that happens. Who, how would that seat fill?
Pardon me?
If someone bleeds or dies or something, how would that seat fill?
Currently, what happens is if the board has a resignation or admit that the board itself would refill that seat. And they would have to do refill, if you're the Shoreham rep and you moved or retired or whatever, they would have to fill with somebody from Shoreham. So the board would vote on it. And that new person would fill out a term that was left in your old seat. And then that, when that term is up, that seat will be up for reelection again in Shoreham. So the procedures would be similar to what's in place right now. Are there any other questions? And I did want to let you know that Peter Conlin and I have been working pretty closely, and Peter Burrows, with our Ben Sharon, with our town clerks to make sure that all of our town clerks are on the same page, make sure they all understand what's going on. They're a huge resource to voters and to candidates, so we wanted to make sure they all knew what the procedures were. So hopefully, they will all be up to speed. We're meeting with them next week. We're showing them the ballots. We're talking to them about the procedures. And Peter Conlin has already been in email contact with them and meeting with them in person as well. So we're hoping that that part of the process will be fairly smooth. It will be a huge turnout election because it's also a presidential primary here. So we're hoping that we get a lot of people out voting for this, one way or the other, that democracy rules.
I don't know if other people are clear on this, but I'm stuck on the vote. You showed articles. And so can you explain what has to happen for this to pass? Because with all those separate articles, what are we looking at?
So there are actually two articles that I'm thinking will be voted on. Article 1 will be the provisions of the construction of the new board. So the grades, the boards, numbers, the debt and the property, and then the provisions in the report. So voters will vote yes or no on Article 1, which will include all of those components.
And it's a separate ballot that's co-mangled?
And it's, it's, right, it's a separate question and it's co-mangled with all of our towns. But it's, it's not co-mangled, he writes. Stop talking to me, Ray. It's not co-mangled. Each town has to vote yes for it to pass.
And we're just having a majority?
Pardon me?
And it's just the majority? Could be by one vote?
It could be by one vote, but it has to pass by at least one vote in all of our towns for it to pass. If one town votes no, it fails in all of the towns. However, if that one town votes no, then that town can revote and try to vote yes. Or other towns can revote and try to vote no. So there's still the same provisions of recalling the vote with a petition, signature, a signature petition. But we all have to vote yes for it to pass. If one votes no, it doesn't pass until we all get on the same page. Article 2 is electing the school directors. That is the one that's co-mangled. And that will, that is just the majority of the seven towns. If, you know, Joan Smith is on the ballot and she gets the majority of the votes for Ridport, she wins. It doesn't matter where the vote's from. So does that make sense? It's a little different from Article 1 to Article 2.
And the language, we'll have to say it's dependent on Article 1 passing, right? Because it would be moot if it doesn't.
Yeah, Article 2 would be moot if Article 1 doesn't pass. But there is a provision of law that we have to do this at the same time. And I know that this is confusing and we had actually wanted to do it separately. We wanted to do the vote on Article 1 first, so we had a new school district and then elect a new board. But unfortunately, Vermont law requires us to do it at the same time. So that's why we're sort of in this position where it's confusing and there's a lot going on. But it's the law, so we have to follow it.
So as a follow-up from Tracy's, if Article 1 doesn't pass in a particular town and then we get to revote, what happens to the Article 2 ballots, either from that town or from all of the towns?
That is a question I haven't heard yet, JP. I'm not positive about what the question is, but we will, I don't think if... Go ahead, Jason, what do you think?
There's no district to elect officers or if the district doesn't have.
So?
So the election of the unified district directors is moot. And the election that also is occurring at the same time of the current school board directors will proceed in that way.
So if one town votes no and then revotes, all towns would then have to revote on Article 2? Is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm not sure about.
Yeah, we'll have to get back to on that because I'm not positive if we would, I mean, definitely might take a shot at that. I think we would probably have to. He's a cautious lawyer. I think we would have to revote on the whole board, but we will ask our legal counsel that very question. And simultaneous to this is that our current boards, any seats that are up for election or reelection, will be voted on this time. So our current boards will remain intact. You'll have your elections for those boards. Those boards will continue to exist. Whether this passes or fails, they'll continue to exist for at least another almost two years, up until December of 2017. So if it passes, there'll be simultaneous boards in order to take care of the business of transition. If it fails, then our boards will just continue to exist until we come up with another alternative. So?
That's a good question. Any other questions about any of this stuff before we go to next stuff?
Thank you very much. Please call me or email me if you come up with other really good or whatever questions. Thank you.
Before we break, I'm going to ask Peter Conlin to speak to the division between facts and tactics.
Sure. As this process goes forward, there's sort of the official neutral group that's just putting down the facts, and that's the charter committee and anybody else who's involved with that. At the same time, there is a pack that's figured this out, we'll do it by being on my computer, that's really going to be more, do more of the advocacy, just sort of clear line between what the official boards are doing and what is purely the neutral and just putting out the facts and those who are actually out there selling. The pack is really designed to raise money, to then, you know, to buy law signs, posters, advertising. That's really what it's about. But it's a separate, it's a community.
All right. If everyone can turn to their town corner and have this conversation. If we can do it 15 minutes or so, that would be wonderful. Come back together and see what comes up. Okay, we're going to freestyle this a bit here. And I'd like to just go around through a quick, making top issue from each one of the districts as a background for this conversation.
I would say the top issue is to allow us not to be a vote. Is that a negative?
Yes.
It's not about closing schools.
What is it?
Pardon?
Act 46 is not about closing schools, it's about government consolidation, affecting government schools, more as we all want to, and other kids.
For what?
So you said, you said second, that change it in the conversation, away from the idea that it's about closing schools. Also, I think just getting the word out there to people, including the conversation.
How do you expand?
I think that we feel that there aren't necessarily a lot of people talking about it yet before more. And so finding ways to engage people, maybe ask questions.
So after we do this first round, we'll come back and find out what we want.
Well, you have some thoughts about it.
I think the primary concern for us is the answer to the second.
Well, I'm just looking for the one, I'm considering about the overall, it's not, that's one.
Well, we're also talking about verifying that this is not a big shift in representation as far as rural schools and high school, that it's still fairly consistent with what representation is about.
It sounds like a change, but it's not a big change for tax.
So overcoming this, you're in about, you're in about to change, but it's a big, yeah. Chris, look at round three, we're going to back to the bottom.
No, tell me, do you want to?
Yeah, I think, I think we're all on the same page. I think we're concerned about just focusing on, you know, a unified board being the concentrated benefit of all the students in ACSU. I think that's our main focus, the student charge.
The student sector message. Is that a concern because that's missing or that's just a positive?
I think it should be a stressor. I think it should be in the forefront, you know, not the... I'll parallel with the educational benefits and the cost-effective benefits. I think it should be, you know, this is what this 13 number board is going to be tied with.
Sure.
I think this is kind of an information session, maybe go talk to the session, information.
Okay, the information conversation. Mary?
We had a lot of different things, but I think, I'm going to turn it off a bit. The togetherness aspect, that was Devon's term, that we, that we focus on that, that we're all in this together already and that this will just make us more into it, in it together even more clearly. Devon, where are you? You said it better than I have. And who's left the bill?
No, that was verbatim, though.
Do you have any more?
I think that there's a, Devon was really good at identifying two sort of concerns in Middlebury. One is the economic impact, because the economic impact is different for Middlebury. And then two, the fact that Middlebury tends to support education and support its schools. And so being able to talk about why it's beneficial for our kids and our schools would really sell it in Middlebury and to reassure people about the economic impact.
Perfect. We had two concerns that came up. One was the concern that the new directors could be elected not by one zone town, but by other towns. And the second concern we had is like Shoreham, the information concern. We were worried about the lack of voter information about other towns' candidates leading to bad turnout of the informed voting. One more time, I'm sorry. The second point, about lacking information. That voters not having the information about the plethora of candidates from their towns and might here stay home and abstain where they might make bad decisions.
So I got an email from somebody after seeing my post on Front Porch Forum about this, who suggested a candidate forum that would be for all the candidates in all of our towns. So we could all get to know each other and who's running from our town. So that might help with that issue and then we can ask questions of people from other towns.
You said democracy.
Democracy at work.
Other plans, David?
There can be plans. If people think it's a good idea, people will help me organize it.
You said 15, 16 days?
There are 56 days. And I was also thinking, most of our outreach has been on school needs, actually, which is really hard for some people. So thinking that maybe we want to do a candidate forum on maybe a Saturday morning or Sunday afternoon and we get different people to come than have come to some other things. So I'm willing to help organize a candidate forum. If I could get a couple other people who are actually going to help me, help me do it. And if we can find a date that most of the candidates can do it.
So we're going to kick into public engagement now, so let's start with that topic right there, too. Matt, propose a lot of people's thoughts on that, on the candidates. Minimum 13, but probably more like 35 candidates. What are your thoughts on candidate forum, a centralized, single candidate forum, self-organization?
It can't be like the Republican Party. I mean, if you have that many people, then everybody is just doing their thing or whatever. Unless it's more, I think you said a meet and greet where people are there signing on a candidate for this and just engaging conversations with people. But it can't be 30 people sitting up on a stage.
Right. Well, we could come up with something that's a mix of equitable structure and informal meet and greet, maybe, that will allow people to both talk to candidates but give everybody a little bit of airtime to introduce themselves.
Yeah.
Does that sound like a good compromise?
Well, not necessarily a mailer, but if people, if a candidate wants to submit, you know, a biography about what their intentions are, where they're from, what they are, that may be easier than trying to do it. This, I'm not immediately throwing a bunch of different ideas, but I just think it may be an easier forum to distribute that information, either on a website or electronically rather than having...
Well, one of the things we have to be careful with is that we can't, as school boards and as a public entity, be working on behalf of any candidate. So we can organize a forum and have candidates do whatever they, you know, want, but we can't then distribute their flyers and put them on a website. So I mean, I think we could do some compromising, but we just have to be really careful that we don't cross the line to advocate for a particular candidate.
So the idea in general is of this feeling, logistics obviously needs some work to that. I'm getting headaches, you know, it's okay. Good. Would the Addison Independent be able to work with us?
I'm sure they could, yeah.
Are they going to be doing the issue, the special report?
And my buddies at MCTV have already volunteered.
Yeah, that's different. Well, they seem to be bored, that's a different thing. You certainly should ask, you're specific around candidates about the election of the directors, not the...
Okay. Ten people run through the report from the break. I don't know any of them. I would like to get a sense of, I think John Flower, if you're interviewing him, or has their bios on the Addison Independent website in print, that would be a big plus. And to have John Flower, David O'Shea, Addison Independent at this forum, that would be, you know, real, I think, synergy.
So Brian's already volunteered to help. Who else would be willing to help?
Jerry's going to stand up.
Jerry, we need other people besides Ripton. Not that there's anything wrong with Ripton. We love Ripton, but come on. Orain, anyone else? Takers, John, you've seen her, you've had an opinion, so you're on it, buddy. I've got it. Yeah, you. John.
Yeah, I'll sit in between the old white show.
Yeah.
Sure, I'd love to help you out.
Thank you, I'd like to count on you.
All right.
Let's roll forward to the end of the regional panel here. Other venues for public engagement around the area. There's been a thought that combining towns and bringing opinions of different towns together is a good idea. Put that out there for the public, is that a good idea? Some towns prefer to go it alone. Do individual district boards want to do the presentation themselves? Do they want support from other members of the board? And when and where? Any questions?
I'm going to, I think the best report, we just gave four in a second, and preferably two or maybe even more than that, stagger times, so we have everyone to make it. And none of us on the board feel that, well, we'd like support, I'll say that. I mean, we can't answer all the different topics, we can't do what this does, so, yeah.
You're telling me I have to be there all day? I can't organize it, but I'll come.
Okay, and then the other thing I just wanted to point out is that when the break, we've been called.
So, yeah, just four days, but... Where, what's the venue?
I would say a daytime one at the town library, we do it, and then I test it at the school.
Daytime, weekday, or Saturday? Okay, you just have to pay some expenses.
Well, we've done considerable amount in town already, so I think we have a number of people understanding this family. Our plan is to, we can do things in the school, we've already done some. And basically just try to hit every different demographic we can think of, which I'm doing fully on screen guard.
So you're comfortable in your board going forward with this?
We actually talked a bit about how we've had difficulty in the past getting people to come into the school for information and gatherings. One of the things that we have tried was maybe adding some open houses at board members' homes at multiple eventful times, just to try to get in a different demographic of the town. But we also have teen conversation with at Ripton, which she's going to, I think, invite Peter Condon to talk. FOCS meetings, those kinds of things. We didn't discuss whether, what kind of support we needed though, so we'll need to come back to it.
Okay. Are you considered to be a formal entity, or is it value?
That's a good question. We wanted to have that too.
Consider that as well.
That's a good. Speaking of Salisbury, we have three things that we'd like to talk about. We'd like some help and some representation to visit the Salisbury landfill on Saturday morning. Not only are you going to get the largest contingency of Salisbury population, but there's also other members of ACSU that would attend there. I think it would be a very advantageous place to be. We're going to reach out to a group of older residents, possibly changing our time. We have an evening forum, we're going to try and change to a mid-morning forum, something like a coffee or tea for some retired people. And either parlaying that or also potentially inviting East Middlebury residents, you know, that maybe not want to go to Middlebury, or, you know? Like, we can just open up that boundary, you know, there may be some people, or we'd be up for that discussion too. And as we're talking about the candidate forum, Ruth, maybe you and I can come up with some ideas.
Yeah, Sarah Partridge Library, we have Ripton, East Middlebury, and Salisbury.
That sounds good.
What about support, John? Is your board comfortable?
I think for the, I think the land, I think I'll need some muscle of the land though. Peter's going to be back to that. So, but I think if Ruth and I talk about the potential of East Middlebury Library, then I think the other forum, we would be fine with that.
Well, we talked about recycling, which is two Saturdays a month, and Ripton is a good place to get people. We're having a budget hearing in January that we usually have every year, and we're going to probably invite people to it as less of a budget hearing and more as the Act 46 consolidation information meeting. Will we need help? We didn't get a chance to discuss what kind of help we'll need, so we'll have to get back to that.
We'll also use Front Porch Forum, so all ten people are so, we read it, we'll... And I'm also the town blogger for it, so I'll do a lot of questions about that.
Middlebury, I don't know, we have a lot of people on the ground, so I'm not sure if we need help. I'm looking around at my Middlebury people on this. And we have a lot of people who are involved in the process, so I think we have fairly informed board members. The candidate forum, I think, would be really helpful, because there'll be a lot of people running from Middlebury. I also just want to encourage everybody to do things like writing letters to the editor and engaging that way, and finding people who can be advocates by writing letters to the editor, posting on Front Porch Forum, but be careful that what you post is factual and not something that's opening up for a debate, because you might get stuck on a Front Porch Forum debate that you don't want to be in. And social media at the end, I think.
At the end.
Talk about this?
Yeah.
I think social media at the end, in the last couple of weeks, to get out the vote and to make, you know, posting on your own Facebook page and sharing it with friends and making sure people understand that you're a resource, but also that, you know, you are supportive of these efforts as a school board member, because I think there are more people on social media than on things, even in our little town. So I think it's been a big thing in other campaigns, so I would really encourage people to do that, especially for the get out the vote.
What's the sense of who's paying attention at this point? Is the conversation vibrant? Is it nonexistent? Is it somewhere in between? Can you hear the news?
It's the same people who are in most of the school and issues in general.
Is that making you a bit nervous at this point, or is it really a bit nervous? Do you have a... Any other thoughts, other thoughts, deeper thoughts? Any emerging opposition that anyone is...
I think I just heard an infusion of Act 46 being about school closure. That's really the only thing I've heard from a couple of people I've talked to, that this is a school closure that is getting that, that not... Probably one of the biggest and worst things that people are standing.
Let's do a quick round on the talking points before we go over to the shoulder. Chris, you want to kick it off? Everybody's got a copy, if everybody receives a copy of the talking points. The objective would be to give this down to something every board member can add and be comfortable with, and engage in conversation. It's lengthy, I would say, at this point. Flexibly just kind of dictate that, if you can come up with a little streamlining. If that's what you desire, that's what we might do. If not, it's good, it's, we'll work on what we got. Chris, I know you have some concerns.
Yeah, I think that just in general, we have that event discussion, the first discussion is... I think a lot of these things, for me, raise questions, and I don't necessarily know what they all mean. And I think that this is going to be our talking point, so we need to have a lot of discussion and direction as to what some of this stuff actually means.
You have a suggestion of how we facilitate that? It's been live documented for two weeks, and we've had more people participate so far.
Yeah, well, and I think part of that, in that discussion too, is the discussion of what is appropriate for the board to be putting out there as board business, that's going to take place in the legislative board.
So not crossing the line of advocacy?
Well, even just specifically the things that were written down there.
You mean future tense? Yeah, if there's an assumption that something might happen in the future, it may be positive.
So it's not necessarily, express it as possible, but not necessarily be a polar. Yeah, and I mean, one person's positive, another person's negative too, so it's really anything... You know, there's certain things we can say going into this, especially in the financial section, that are essentially fact. We know, you know, waivers, probably people will go down, or people will probably look down. It's not, we can say that without, it's just fact, you know, and then... There's a lot of things in here that are not so clear-cut, and could be different needs for people in different places. And I think we have caused a lot of anxiety, or could cause a lot of anxiety.
Do you have a suggestion of how, well, I guess we've got other people looking at the talking points and those concerns?
You know, having seen the presentation a number of times, I was somewhat curious as to why this came about, because I thought there were some pretty good talking points in the presentation for ourselves in terms of keeping it, you know, sort of simple. And this seemed to go to a holding level. And to be frank, that's part of the reason I didn't partake in getting involved in writing, because it seemed like we were, and some of the lines do seem like we're projecting it in the future, and we don't know what the future's going to look like, especially talking points for consolidated schools.
So if, I think if we involve here a couple of reasons. Why is even the, even the sort of presentation of a possible... Jim, was that it requires some actual nation school board, you're still, the best of it, understanding the basis of the kind of, that's the talking point. A number of these change how the actors, the communication, the community, the community, the community that you're helping out, and tend to, professional.
I guess I would echo, think what I'm hearing from Mark, is I think these are complicated talking points, and they're getting into areas that are wrong for these people. And I'm just wondering, from the board members who are here, if they feel like they need talking points, or if they feel like they have enough information to go out and talk to their communities with what they have and the resources they have? Or if this is worth the time to clean this up, or are we good where we're at?
Mixed feelings. I mean, I think the board, there's never a problem with more information, especially in this, but cleaning it up is important. And I think, and I would be to harp on, you know, I think projection is a tough thing to look forward to in this. I think we've got to stick to the facts. And not to point out something so particular, but there's a line that says, "Teachers that struggle in existing situations could have opportunities to succeed elsewhere in the district." You know, I think that we're projecting, that we're, I just, I think that's like a, that's like a labor. That's not, you know, an issue that we should be addressing.
It's not board function. Yeah, and there are frequently asked questions on the website, that also people can use as resources. And members of the Charter Committee, who've worked on this for the last four months intensively, and our lovely superintendent, all of us can use resources if you get stuck, but, I don't know. I just don't want to work on a document that's going to...
Well, to me, to me, if we're in a polish it, that suggests that there's some manner in which we're using this kind of in its polished form. And when I see the talking points, to me, they are just that, they're sort of talking points. They're points that I might hit in a conversation with a constituent or someone else about what's going on and what's the value of this. So I would take the talking points and sort of, you know, give my own sort of spin slash perspective on that. And so the polishing is something that I feel like, that's something that I do sort of in the conversation, and I don't know that, that for me, there's a lot of value in making it more shiny than it is.
As to the talking points that were brought up in our discussion, that it includes benefits but not risks.
I think I would also rather come out of the conversation with questions rather than creating more questions. I don't know if that makes sense. You know, I would rather be able to go back and find answers rather than creating more questions with a document that, you know, may not work for me.
So we should move on. So the question, in general, the question is, do we want to pursue polished talking points? Do we want to abandon this and do what we know that we have already?
Lots of hurting those feelings, but I think we can discard, you know, the talking points as this document, that is, you know, I think we have an excellent stash of resource and information out there right now. I think putting more time out there into this is, is, we'd be, Peter, spinning our wheels or going by it.
On the agree? 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 Good, okay. All right. Good guidance, everyone. So we'll work off, some people are going to get back to us on their needs for support in the public engagement process, and that's what we need to do, our efforts to hear. Anything else before we close? All in favor?